Hi.
Wow. So great. Oh. What's up?
This is Alan.
It's all. Thanks. Okay.
And why is there my problems? It's because I know it's talking to him.
Alan is.
I talk too softly. I think this is the work of my makes it good.
I'll be ready to fight us start twenty seconds early.
Alright. We're gonna call meeting to order and ask you all to pick stand and attach the reason. And let us do it. Actually, that's going to be in the position for Pastor Richard Moore and Pastor John Weber. Howard. Senator John Weber. Serve this way. You'll carry twice to different services. We'll do it.
Ready? Begin. I pray that the leaders to the flag of the United States of America. The two thirty Republican for which we stand. I'm not changing. In this whole of the diversity and depth of our.
I just want to say that I've gone on over fifty mission trips. Dr. Chief Wood. I've been a patient of his forty five years. I've had to really try to pray. And you've been here with the thank you for the city of Hopeville. We thank you for the council. We thank everybody who serves. Thank you for the people of the city. He he was especially important part of us. Here in Hopeville. We just prayed just that we had this incredible storm. Uh, that's caused a lot of damage to see now that we come back from all the difficulties. And I know that's because in God we trust. We believe in you always. Blessings in your presence. And we thank you to the chief of this. We thank you for the network. Difference made in seventy lives. Not only here, but around the world. We just thank you for the city of Hopeville. And recognize them. We're each one here are just blessed in their presence. And we sense your Holy Spirit stood on each of our hearts and lives. We even pray that you praise Jesus. Amen. Sunday, Thursday, that is the recent American station posted the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The original agenda for this meeting was posted August twenty second. Um, and then there was a postponement notice. Postponement notice um on August twenty fifth. And then the most recent updated agenda was posted on Friday, August twenty ninth.
Somebody's closed session to announce our training. Uh, nothing to report that a labor. These are hard times. Welcome, Chairman of the. It is a special night. You got me in a special night and then we got someone. Started waiting this morning and all along. We certainly recognize Dr. Gil Chief Wood. He's your wife. All years of service. Tonight. Uh, we'd like to make a special night. By offering something that really does turn a lot. That is, it is the key to this year of Hopeville presented to Dr. Gil. We were significant to our community. If you'd like to come over, they'll hand this to you and take a picture of the council. And we're gonna take lots of pictures because some families are gonna wanna come up here. Where we want to be in the picture. This is my work. Thank you, Paul. And yeah. Serving. But she done for our community. No small way, make my smile better. And uh, it certainly, it certainly. Say it well. Do you like what you like to make a beautiful thing?
Do you have a regular one where you pull them?
Yeah. It's very hard to sort of stand it. It's probably a tough time. Right, right fast. I think it's eighteen, nineteen, fifteen, middle of the summer. And we're feeling a little bit. We want out of Philly, didn't never stop. So again, I just thank the Lord for all the due service and. First thing I remember is the people in this town. I got you. All your luck to the border to be here. And we have one of my first patients, same sharp as another one of my third patients. Will Samah Hawa and Dorothy. Was the dress shop. Who was that? Doris. Doris. And anyway, uh, then Walt. And Dallas. Just surrounded me and just. Women just shook me and and just made a big difference. I knew I was welcome. With the people in this. And stuff. And a smaller. Out of our. Conferencing. Right, and really appreciate it. Father with Sandy. Just thank you, guys, for your worship. Like, it's been a. Three, four years. I'm not done yet. Just uh, switching gears. I I've got a look on you, man. But that office is not closed, it's just in operation. Your general vision mission is about prophets who are concerned areas around the world. How people will do. I go medicine. And then we can. So, you know, we uh, just serving as underserved people. And. I've gone to Dallas. For a couple of weeks. Speaking of. Speaking on Port Vision down the street. And at the venue on Mission Two. And then uh, in. October, we're going to Long Island. In January, we're going to Port Vasco, Devo, for Hocken. Give them. So. And the other thing about everyone is you're on to some trip, just that no. And I always was. We're trying to keep the numbers down. We keep it down around thirty people or less before you have fifty three. Sometimes sixty. Now, uh, you know, we try to keep it manageable, but it just kind of gets. Can't say no to anybody. Somebody wants to go, you're welcome. Recently, at at Trinity Baptist on a Sunday evening, we did a presentation. And it went back to it, this year, I watched a bunch of different uh, groups. Was involved in locations. People over there, a younger you, a younger pastor. A younger versions of people that uh, well, uh. Have a good life so young and as yourself. Trying to all of those, please. I think a blessing for the people you serve, of course. We tend to open them. Four kids. And uh, the girls take care of each other. We take care of each other in this town. And I told my boys when they were little, they went to the box, it's good. Family of boys. They got. The fourth, I'm young, I'm fifteen. When they got home. I had a hundred and fifteen on the bicycle, I'm doing that right now. We took care of each other in this town. People would. And it really, it's it's been a blessing. I don't know in this town. And you can't help but love the guys. They're going to walk. It's just a minute. So, we're we're gonna get out of the way of it, so with John Hook. They came and made him a moment to sing for you to suffer, not with a. But maybe for a cupcake. He wanted to do it in the morning. Do I have to say something else about you? I'd rather say monkey. Now, Gil has been a friend and an amazing individual. And I think he does represent uh, what Hopeville stands for. Is that we all do look out for each other. He has a deep Christian faith. And that's evident in the fact that he cares for each of his people. Uh, I've seen he and Debbie. Uh, and Nita, obviously. Um, been on a mission trip way there. Debbie was fifteen years old, we were all tired, we were, you know, ready to go to bed. Debbie was still going at nine o'clock. And Gil was there, funky. And uh, you know, uh, he just got great just humor. Says, hey, you wanna pull a tune? What do I do? Just act like you know what you're doing. And so he helped me through that first. But anyway, I just think that's a great uh, honor. To say, Hopeville, to honor him, his family, and his commitment to our. So thank you. So what we'd like to do is uh. Picture. This is the group. We can uh, hold that up for photos. I want to be able to follow your wife up here and family up here. Stand in front of the seal and get a few more pictures. So that, you know, when we're here, you're gonna just tell who we come out of land, and we're gonna draw away. Couldn't do this on my way. Everybody's. Love others, can I? Right here. Nita, can you grab that? Oh. What do you say? We've got the cupcakes. So uh, a short meeting, but you probably know how you stay for all of our. Bit of all that we do. But you would like to probably have a cupcake. We're taking a break today. Anybody would like to have a memento of a delicious treat. Family first, if they wanna eat a cupcake, Gil. Dr. Chief Wood, would you like a cupcake? Please, if don't just tweet, we'll take a short break and you guys can chat and uh. And we'll we'll call at some point if you want to meet.
No, underneath, no. And. I was telling him, like, oh, yeah. Oh, it's like. Well, like, do your own, that should be that, but. He didn't know for sure. I really wanted me to cheer, but. That's why she tried. She was, she was doing the last tour. So I guess you're welcome. I wonder if she's waiting to blink and just head to her head. Wait, you're leaving a lot of the years later. And she was already reaching out. And then she, and then I was calling, I was just gonna do it. She said, I can't do it. I know. I know her kid. I would totally do it. It was a cool joke, but in my, in my opinion, this is. I would love to.
Well, you're gonna have to come back Monday. Now you're gonna have to call it, we're gonna go soon.
You know, I could help it anyway. You know, make it. That's gonna be a little. Cause they would turn on your guy. We can have a date like that, like, you would like, like, if you wanted, like. Like, like, lots of chairs. It'd be a terrible. And I get a lot of them. I'm sure everybody would like, we said that it was a change, but it'll be easy. Yeah, I mean, you can change everything. Yes, a little girl. I think for others, you have actually. We do have a convention in town. Yeah. Like, I know they love, I need to do it. Well, you know, I was trying to do the numbers where we sell off. You know, listen, I was a tradition. You can alter the stuff to. See the material you want from it. But I know we live in a crazy person, so I don't know. They can't wait for our personal game. Cause they're all into it. Other schools do that really like, they sell it once a month. Or even like, if you didn't like it, like, you should charge them. Well, that's what we're already, that's where I'm like, what are you gonna do? And uh, that's where. And this year, we can't hear you on the phone, you. So it's okay. I'm so mad inside, it's outside my circle, it's like, you can't even care for the girls, right? And like, all the old. I mean, most of them, so I, I love to do that, I'll be honest with you. I mean, you can be done with recruiting by like, seven, when they start, or because of. So some people, I don't know, I was not out joking with my husband, I was like, I think if they're like, do like, a burial, I propose that we change their recruiting. So like, I'm off and watch the game. Would do it. I know. But it was like, we had. We had that. Yeah. Like, that's basically. But yeah, I I really think that. A lot of people, they stream their speech down. But yeah, like, I think we should try to be all right to. Cheer. I mean, they really love it. It's a black. Are the kids, are they loved? Well, especially. I mean, maybe it was the day, but like, no one wanted to show up with darkness, you know? To cheer. I like literally, like, all the people that I do. I think that's funny, I was just thinking, I was just. That was a big thing. Cause I think I can, at least got you like. In my, maybe, yeah, maybe it's got some different. That old. If he's. They're not gonna learn anything from like, just to get up there. Yeah, something that they'll. But it's, I think it should. I mean, I get it. Sorry, but. I don't know. Okay, but I'm always. Cause if you got left, it's a problem. At first, when they brought him, I wasn't glad they brought him around. They invited. It was just. And I would. It was like, stop, like. They they invited him, right him out before. I mean, I think it's a dedication, like, he didn't invite. I feel like. Yeah. I guess it's a duty. So. I think it's something important. Right, like, you're the. I think for the. Congratulations. Look.
Congratulations.
You've never been there. Last week. It's. But I didn't think. Which is really like. And. Yeah. It's not bad for the students. One.
Last card for cupcake or photo. This award will be outside. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'm the cupcake connoisseur of a high carrot cake cupcake.
Thanks, Doc. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. That's good. Let me keep working on that. Feel free to come back.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanna say thank you first. Thank you very much. Thank you for all. Really appreciate. Don't be tripping over too many calls.
Thanks.
When I ordered it, I made sure it was a copy of mine.
Good.
Moving forward. Then we have a presentation of Peter.
That looks a little suspect. I don't know. Oh, heck. We talked right into it.
Right into it.
Yeah.
Well, first. Thank you. Standing for. I, I feel like, actually, I. I see a lot of. I lived. Thirty years. And so it's exciting. Seeing a lot of folks. I haven't. Like, cause I'm. Chief. If you hear. I'm sure you prepare my parents. I'll be. Come through. Then get. Kind of quick, but. We're on. But, you know what? Serve a lot of underserved. So that's actually. So. We're in the community. I'm called Mr. Hauser. Uh, but I also am sure that you couple things. You can put that policy. Together for. You hand it. So let's start off with. Why is this important? Moving on to the next slide. What's our mission to raise? Why you might here? Like. And how. Work together is vital to the success of our students. Our mission is obviously. Is to foster. Um, foster. Intensive education. And technology. Of every. Pull up. And very. Sure. Sit students in chief. Education. Miracles. Be positive. That's. As you can tell, our photograph. There'll be more members. Area one is. God is represented by. Our local area. This segment represents. Area. Three, I represent Imperial. Excuse me. That's what I'm. But we're member. Foster. Growth. For. Why I'm here. I'm looking because of that. Also because of my product. Down to. And our. First in area four is. Represent. Area five. And we represent. This area here. Where. District Dina represents. The northern part. Imperial. You can tell. Also. Moving forward to another slide. So the mission again is eliminate barriers. To increase access and success and eradicate poverty. That's our goal. And shift. And this form is just the board. And for many others. That need. Where. We're working. Develop a strategic. And objectives to making sure that we're on track. We are. Livable. To our, to our administration. Today. But the board is envisioning the next, for the next year and so forth. Next slide. So if you can tell. Outside these. I don't. But I will. Emphasize that once we. Has to use an involvement. Funding. Increase success. And then force the. Stricted IDC's financial position. As you guys. And actually increase. Continuing to be unique. Why is that? Is it this reason? I didn't just represent. Period. I rather. And I'm here to make that. To let. That we. Trying to. We are committed to. To succeed. So. Um, you guys. Making up for. Our. So what is doing? This is. Very vital part. Our success. See more students. English. Yes. So this helps us to help our students get closer to the graduate. And let me tell you. Your first two years of Harvard. The first two years of Yale. First two years of UCLA. Started at IBC. Why is that so important? It's because it saves them. Of course. University life right now. It's about what. Just to take the course. Have a universal. Here. Moving on to the next. We call them. I don't have a minute to put time. Moving forward. Um, on the. Total headcount. We had twelve thousand four hundred ninety-five. Numbers. We'll. You guys can tell there, there are remits. Our headcount and. Uh, applications that were. Next. Uh, our non-credit. Now, that's one. So allowing me to do presentations. And I've talked about. You know, taking. Want to take. Areas. That may not be. A student. But maybe to. Some underserved. Computers. Citizenship classes. In that way, I used to offer citizenship classes. About thirty years ago. So I was honored. To be a professor there. Still. And. Uh, moving on to the next slide. As you guys could see, there are transfer rates. You can get out of fifteen hundred. Students. Their. If their goals are. Four-year institutions. The next one that's. Next to it. Twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. Is transferring fall of twenty twenty-four. Five hundred and twenty-seven students from San Diego State. And all the other universities and schools. Where these students had transferred. A total of nine hundred and sixty-nine. Folks, that really deserves applause. All over. How's it? Moving on to the next slide. Um, as you can see, this is. One of the goals that we posed on our. Community college requests. Consider looking at these factors. Increase access to success. Integrate our artificial intelligence in the classroom. Improve our financial management and. Of course. Profession. Not in for our. Our instructors. So they can. Continue to grow. Provide that simple to our. For students. And then, of course, enhance our marketing. Event management and outreach. And by the way, I'm marking the IBC. We're in today. So making that possible. Moving on to the next slide. Obviously, as you can see here, this is a photograph. President. Which represents IBC receiving the Aspen. A virtual. Week year. This is going to be. Right thing that only a few colleges. Few institutions receive this across. See, this happens to be. That, that. You know, that's the example of what. Success is all about. Moving on to the next slide. And then, of course, the last thing that you should know. Is incredibly a good feeling for all of us. Is that, as it says right there in the article. As we see. This leadership has an opportunity, college and university, for. Foundation for the advancement of teaching. This record can highlight institutions that have. Underrepresented students. And can take strong postgraduate graduation. See, it's one of. Two colleges in California to receive this. Part of the broader twenty. Twice the access and. Earn its classification. And this. So again. To the institution for working from the top. Always. The last person. I see. Slide. The last thing. Is your support is the foundation there. For good reason. We put that. That. Over there for. For this. Anyone would like to donate and support our institution. And of course. The last thing that we. For the office likes. Again, the media. So it's really addressed to our communities. What are we doing? Elector. We are pleased to announce the formation of a dynamic committee comprised. Of. Organizations. In collaboration. We are launching an extraordinary initiative for the first time ever. This groundbreaking event is designed to empower high school females. In our region. Who aspire to pursue careers in law enforcement. Providing them with a unique opportunity. To explore their. Consists of. Educational organizations. Community learning institutions. Committing agency. These implementers are dedicated professionals. Committed to. Supporting. And young women. With the exceptional resources. College. You can play. By the part of this. What we're looking for is community sponsorship. I don't know whether. Hopeville City Council would support that. Whether it's a dollar. Fifty dollars or a hundred or whatever. Anything can be done. But again. My goal is to continue to reach out to the community. To see. To help those girls from. High school. Next level of their educational. Ready. So we. Our ID. Identification number is listed there. All. Records. The IBC Foundation. In dedication. Uh, kind of focused on winning in law enforcement. Yours. We appreciate your commitment. And if you have any questions for me. I've already planned these. For me. And I'm. And I look forward to. Any.
I just. Asking. I'll see if it's a scholarship for an effect.
Correct.
Or. Scholarship or anything like.
Right. I'm doing that. I find the ID. So. Also. Various institutions as well. Uh, one of the members of the committee, as you can see. Collaborative partner. Down. People. Promotion. Improve our college. Mr. Hauser. Trying. This is. That we're. Together. Robert Alvarado, who's in Imperial City Council. We also. Some community. Who now. Has volunteered to support. We also, uh, some community who now has volunteer support for. For a few ladies, which we are currently having a hundred and fifty young ladies. At this event. So they're sponsoring the entirety of. So we applaud. They have bags, the pants, the papers, the backpacks for climbing the pitches. And then, of course, they have this insecurity on campus to making sure everything runs smoothly. So, and one of the supporters that is. Statistically. Uh, it's also a co-chair. Seeing our brutal property to California Highway Control, capping the cars. Um, this event, and I'm sure many of you know him already, because he's right here in Hopeville, as well. So we're two products. So again, thank you for allowing people to speak. And I don't know if Mr. Hauser would like to add something, or.
Sure. Just real quick. So, uh, Mr. Hauser, I'm actually the dean of helping. Try to oversee the academy programs. Retired as a police commander, so all after twenty years. So I'm really comfortable within law enforcement sphere. Uh, the idea that it actually hardens, you're saying, approach just on supporting it, bringing on more females. It's kind of aligns with what we've done at our academy. So in the course of the last four years I've been there, we've increased our recruit training officers, more female exposure, more female instructors. Uh, because it really is a unique, different side of law enforcement. Um, and to be able to have that insight is really helpful. So to be able to get on board and support something, uh, that is going to open that up. Uh, it's not just police, but it's also corrections, uh, which is huge. So in fact, the interesting, our enrollment for our corrections academy has completely flipped to where I think seventy-five percent of my enrollers, my class of forty, are females. So I think it's a force to be reckoned with, uh, and I think it's a great time to show off to, to some of the ladies coming out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hauser. Any other questions?
Hi, Tony. So you said.
Your female has a question.
If you're a hundred, you plan on having an overall or different piece?
We're, we're planning to have a hundred and fifty. And out of those hundred and fifty, we're designing seven spots for our friends at the Calgary Unified School District in Blythe. So we can invite them as well. They're going to be one of my next visits at their board, uh, member, uh, you know, events, uh, meetings.
So is there like an application process for the?
Right, so what we're doing, we're putting together the application, the program is pretty much in seventh place. The only thing, we're just tweaking it, uh, making some minor edits to it. And as soon as we get it ready, we're going to also be presenting to the Imperial County Board of Supervisors. Uh, who else? There are various organizations, City Council, Nell Central. Uh, we're going also to Callexico, Raleigh, and so forth. So, uh, it's exciting, you know? Very exciting for a hundred and fifty young ladies to, to look at this venture. And like Mr. Hauser just pointed out, IBC has a dynamic academy program already in place. Why not support it? And this is a community partnership. It's not just run by our institution, IBC. This is a community partnership. We are working together to make it work. So we, we, we just, we would appreciate your support, uh, by being one of our partners on our program. And allowing, you know, people to know that we are working together to make this happen.
You guys look at that consideration?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Hauser as well. So I know that on your staff or, uh, for some of your correctional training, you have some of the correctional staff in the institutions that are there.
We do, yes.
And so just for your awareness, in case you're not aware, uh, the state also has, uh, an effort where they're trying to, that thirty percent, uh, the leadership, uh, CDCR. Uh, to be women in, in that role by twenty thirty. So they refer to it as thirty by thirty. And so if you're not aware that this is in alignment with their efforts, obviously, this is in alignment with law enforcement as well. So, um, with, with those staff, you may want to engage with them, because I don't know what other involvement they may be able to participate in.
Well, one of the things I just want to quickly point out is that Dr. Johnson, our superintendent president, is a dynamic leader. Took on this mission at first, it was, uh, it took some time to kind of put the picture together and to see the, the future of such a program, uh, being a success. And I can tell you is that with the vision of Dr. and Mr. Hauser, Dr. Johnson, and many of the board members that are seeing now the benefits of this such a dynamic event. It, it's going to capture an opportunity for us to continue this year after year after year. So we thank you for that, that tone. Uh, I think we're on the right track to support our communities, to support our law enforcement programs, and more importantly, how IBC is an integral part of making this successful. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time now for general public comments. Public. I could address the city council. The item does not appear on the agenda.
Seems so promising.
Within the. The city council. You may approach the line. Anybody on the. The number one with the consent agenda? The items on the consent agenda are the period out comment. She didn't counsel me or whatever, but she wants to discuss any item. You can press a guy in your booth and accept agenda based on the new business agenda. My desire. These are the items on the consent agenda. A, approval of minutes for the regular meeting on Monday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, current event. C, B, current events, number four, is all B nine through forty-four B one. C, approval of minutes of the special meeting on Wednesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-five, and D, approval of minutes of the special meeting on Wednesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. What's the pleasure of the council concerning the consent agenda? An emotion from.
I'm sorry.
Second, um, council. Local.
John Munger?
Yes.
Mike Pacheco?
Yes.
Mary Anderson?
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mike Goodso.
Yes.
Reports of offers, commissions, committees, and community cases. Service party, yes. Would you like to share?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend, on the twenty-ninth, the thirtieth, and on Labor Day yesterday. Um, we had the swim nights at the pool. And they went pretty smoothly, as I was told, at least. Um, and they, um, that's the official conclusion of the swim season for the summer. So. That is it for the swim season. Um, we have a farmer's market coming up September eighteenth. Couple weeks from now, and it's also going to be slash a movie night that the Chambers is doing in, um. In conjunction with that. Um, I did get an email about you guys, you guys have a League of Cities dinner coming up, so. I just saw that today, so.
Eighteenth?
I'll be.
Just was the host once again.
Okay.
That's the same night as the farmer's market?
I didn't check the date, because I'd just seen that.
The first day.
Um, but, but I'll be getting your guys', you know, meal preferences and attendances for that, so. Um, the fairgrounds. I did see that. It's going to, it's going to be the fairgrounds.
September eighteenth?
Yep, the eighteenth, it says, yep. So. I'll be reaching out to you guys for that, or you can let me know as soon as you can. Um, this September, I guess it would kind of mark a year since we signed on with Text My Gov. We went live, it would be a month later, so in October. Um, came in handy recently for the, um, storms that we had, so that was good. Sent out texts for those and all the, all the emergency posts. So that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. How about you, city manager?
Absolutely, nothing has happened since July.
That's not true. Do you care?
Just kidding. Um, I just highlight a couple of things over my report. Did have a couple of meetings with, um. Uh, both, um, Senator Lee's staff and Senator Adam Schiff's staff. Um, uh, both mayor and I attended those, um, meetings, just kind of keeping the. Trying to keep out in front of those folks, uh, especially regarding the fact that we're, we're looking for funding for our, on building. Um. Excuse me. Um, and I just highlight that we also. Almost, or several, we attended the, uh, teachers' luncheon. Mr. Mayor was the keynote speaker for the sitting there. Mr. Green, yes, there you go. Um, and then even had several meetings lately about our insurance issues, uh, that we're kind of trying to work through with staff and whatnot. Um, and, uh, oh, I guess we'll highlight one more thing we did bring up before, but the stair climb, uh, is this Saturday. And for anybody, it's like, I think Chandler was talking about going. So just talking about. A couple of people.
Thank you, sir. Nick, can you give us, I mean, will you give us a report about like flood damage and what happened last week? Is that coming up?
I was, I was going to do it a little bit with the, uh, the item on.
The item, okay. Actually, would you like to share something with your lawyer league?
The night would not be long enough. Oh, no.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I won't stay there. It's a pain about you. You can take this long.
Well, George is a great student.
But, yeah, I, she was my student, she wasn't my.
I was. So I'm sad that we had to cancel my birthday meeting. Um, that was a bummer, but.
It would have been bigger cake, right?
Yes.
You never know.
I never know. But I did end up coming down to city hall to get and realize our power that we had here. It's my daughter needed to use an electrolyzer, so that was, that was fortunate. I was very grateful to have that option. Um, I did get to visit the shelter that we had over at Cornerstone. Got to speak to the pastor and some red cloth staff, and Chief Silva was there. Uh, so that was, I was happy to shake a people that are grateful that we have that for our residents. Uh, looking forward to, is it Saturday? The stair climb? Looking forward to Saturday and then our, also our Monday meeting coming up next week. That's all I have.
Um, yeah, like Nick said, I took part in the, uh, welcome back teacher luncheon. It's a very nice event. I thought, um, Jennifer from the Chamber really put together a nice event. I know the teachers were happy the truck kit was back and it wasn't pole caps. So, um, yeah, I attended that. And I also took part in, uh, we had that community cleanup a few weeks ago, um, where you could take stuff out here. Um, I just want to say it was very successful, in my opinion. There was a line of trucks kind of waiting to get in there, and they are definitely checking water bills to make sure you're resident of Hopeville before you get in. I was wearing my Hopeville hat. Had a shirt that I was mayor, and they still wouldn't let me in without showing my water bill, so. Uh, they did a good job with that. Um, I also attended the Imperial County Job Fair. I don't know if you guys remember that, early August. I don't think we met some spin, right? Um, where I got to speak to Congressman Raul Ruiz and State Assemblyman Jeff Gonzalez were both there. And of course, the first thing I put in there is, hey, I'm Murray from Hopeville. Remember me, Old City Council? We need money for our, we need money for our public safety ability. And they're like, oh, yeah, we know, we know. So I don't know if they were just giving me, uh, just some of the here that, yes, they're aware of it, or they really have heard it. So I know every time I see both of them, I, I mention it, and then also invited them over to the intercare table. Let's take a picture here with the intercare table of the job fair, which, which was a great event. And I mean, so many people came out to that job fair, just at the mall that day. It was almost overwhelming. So, um.
What did you take to the dump? Or to the waste can?
Well, my wife's assistant made, and we took some old beaten up patio furniture, table, chairs.
I think you just said you took his wife to the.
I tried. She didn't get out. She wouldn't get out of the truck. And would not get out like. But, yeah. Um, and I think that's what I did. I don't think. I've been busy with the storm. My other job had been.
Hey, you guys, uh, power lines?
Yeah.
I watched her again yesterday.
Thank you for that. Even though it was. It wasn't power lines, it was. But we had a.
Um, I mean, then we are looking forward to participating in the, uh, county ceremony. So looking forward to representing Hopeville City Council, although we haven't thrown that calendar yet. Okay. Thank you.
Chief Silva, I, I saw your, uh, video. The police over in front of the Ford Stroll church.
Three times.
Three times. Every time I came down, I was like, there you go.
Did you? I can say.
You got something else to say?
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, public. Excuse me. A couple of things, uh, right now I have, uh, brush truck is out at the Garden Fire, uh, near Fresno. Uh, then I also have between our fire, but with the Caltech OS engine, OES engine at the same Garden Fire. Um, talked to the guys today, they're doing well. Uh, they're going to timeout next Monday. And they're asking for an extension, but they're really told to, they don't have enough personnel to send out to do a court pushback. So, um, good for right now. Um, it mentioned that Stairtime is Saturday. Hopefully, I'll have a good turnout and do some buggy. Uh, talk about nine eleven presentation. Uh, Finley School will do their presentation on nine eleven at eight forty in the morning. I'd like everybody to come out and join us. Uh, Finley School is the only school in the valley that has done a memory presentation since nine eleven. So it's, it's a great honor to have a school, you know, show up. This is their presentation, continuous, uh, the COVID. The COVID element has been stopped since then, so yes. And that's at eight forty in the morning, and then at ten twenty, the middle schools are doing their presentation. So I'll send you all the texts, hopefully make it, when we come back to speak. Let's have you out there.
If, if you have an opinion, it's very good, sir, when I'm having, I've been, I remember the old school. The names. And we are all holding. Names.
What we do is we have flags, and each flag has a, a name of a firefighter that passed away. And so we'll make a presentation and ask all of the students to, on count of three. Mention the person's name that's on the flag, just in memory, just, you know, never forget. So it's, uh.
We count again.
Three, four, three. At, at the time, now it's like five hundred something. With the cancer and all that, so. Again, please, I'll hold it to everybody and, uh. As was mentioned, we did open up the shelter at the storm. Um, there was a great need, there was, uh, thirteen homes on the east side of town that needed electricity. So, um, went out there and, uh, right across came in Paul and said, hey, can we do this? I called Cornerstone, I talked to the pastor, and he was like, yes, please, let's do it. So it happened real quick, and, uh, it happened, and it was, uh. Didn't have a lot of people there, because I think the next day powers are coming back on, so. Uh, but it's definitely something that, uh, we can tap into in the future. We can have real quick. So, uh, during the storm, we did lend out, uh, regenerators for individuals who needed, uh, medical protection. Um, their oxygen or whatever, so we spent to borrow a few generators, we got them all back. Uh, we did, uh, uh, procure four generators from, um, Sunbelt. They dropped it off to us, and we all returned them all back, so they went rather well. We did open up our EOC here in the city, uh, at city hall. And on that board we hear, there's a, a list of every caller that came in. One of my partners, a lot down, every caller came in. So, um, we want to see what it looked like. It was, first it was a, uh, a well-destructive chaos. I have them, guys, the moment we started, they started writing down everything. So we were able to coordinate with, uh, sheriffs and police works and fire guys how to deal with situations, you know? Color told it, free out them all out, and, uh, double them coordinating. Of course, one family, uh, um, Spanish farms that had a tree fall on it. I don't know if you saw the article or the tree or pictures of it, but there was a Toyota that got between. When the tree fell, it ended on the, on the vehicle. And that Toyota kept the tree from going all the way through into the, uh, house. And talking to the father, the dad there, uh, there was kids sleeping in the, in the area there where the tree would have fallen on them. So that Toyota helped them out quite a bit. Yeah, so it was, it was, uh, overall it was a great, uh, coordination with the whole city staff. And, uh, thank them so well again for, uh, you know, being the, uh, incident commander and, uh, and opening up the EOC. Since we haven't spoken in a while, uh, I have returned from the Orleans Fire up by, uh, Mammoth. Uh, we're there for fourteen days and then, uh, five days there and went, ended up at the Rosa Fire Riverside. And then Giver Fire, we timed out over there and go back. And since then, uh, last Tuesday, our staff went up to the, uh, Giver Fire. So that's a quick update and, uh, again, I checked with guys. They're doing well and spirits are still good, so. So again, I'd like to wait for the presentation next week. Uh, any questions?
No, I just want to give kudos because the, the members, church members, Julie Buckhead and her husband and her son were out there. They were at Cornerstone and they were working with, as well as the, the volunteers with Red Cross. Kudos as well?
Okay, Chandler, would you like to share?
Yeah, um, I attended the teacher's luncheon and it was my first experience. I thought it was really awesome that you guys do that for teachers. Um, especially having a mom that was an educator for thirty years. Um, and looking forward to running a line in Stair Climb as early as I may.
For myself, I did enjoy being able to talk to those teachers as not one of them. That was different. I don't think I saw me. I was trying to manage a couple of things. I screwed out the door after my speech because I was in a Zoom meeting with Calco. I screwed it home with, uh. I don't, that was a terrible little tackle. I didn't go well in the Calco department. But I just wanted to make sure the head corn hits and put it. I did go last week, last Wednesday, with David Sump out of SCAG and, uh, the councilmen or the calipatrie, the Comer of Esqua on Riverside, looking about, such a EV vehicle demonstration and all kinds of, you talk about the generators, yeah. New generation of generator in there that was impressive. Everything cost a lot of money. I took a photo of the ninety thousand dollar, it was still morug on the look, more like, uh, escrow. The way it was out could have been had. A lot of hell with this amount. Five hundred miles per car, so that, that was impressive. But that one actually ninety thousand dollars sitting around. Chief, you got that extra ninety thousand dollars set through a non-electric vehicle?
Um, no, we have it. We'll have to.
Okay, talk to Chandler about it. Don't you think? Don't you think? She's analyzed, she's analyzed the data.
Yeah.
Tomorrow I'll go up to STAD and, uh, for getting. So you guys, my thing is retirement is not a slow process, that was a slow thing at all. I do hope to be there for Stair Climb more than both. All right, let's move on to, we have two very unfinished business we have to handle, but new business, we've had a couple of things. I made a discussion related action to adopt resolution twenty five twenty three, approving the extension of water utility services outside of City Hall to a property associated with it. APN O four five dash five three three dash two zero eight, at the Barterworth Country Club. George Galvano. Maybe not.
Well, um, I wasn't really prepared to speak about this, but I do know the basics, uh. This is a property, um, you may be aware there's, um, kind of on the south eastern part of, uh, the country, because there's a couple of vacant lots and still over there. And I believe it's new construction on one of those lots. It's on Vista Verde Drive. And, uh, so because it's outside of City Hall, we have to pass something that says we are willing to service them with water. We don't have too many issues. Certainly the, the supply, the, it's an eight inch line down that street, so supplying that piece of water shouldn't be a problem. And there's a lot of things that have to happen from here, but, but, uh, the council approving extension of services.
Any questions concerning the city council?
I'll move to a group.
I'll second it.
John Munger.
Yes.
Mike Pacheco. Murray Anderson.
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez.
Vanessa Martinez.
Yes.
And Mike Goodson.
He's, he's only got three, four months left in his term, so.
Yeah.
I'm going to be here about new business discussion related in action to adopt the resolution twenty five twenty four. Affirming the disaster declaration of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. I think well, see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll just give a brief synopsis so you guys, if you weren't involved in all of the conversations. So of course the, the, uh, power went out at, at City Hall, I don't know, about two. You know, I should record that stuff as it happened, but you, you always think these things are going to be short duration, but it was probably in the two, two fifteen, two thirty rate range. And of course we kind of thought, you know, it was gonna come and go. Uh, but, um, fairly quickly we found out that there was some significant damage to power lines. And so we started kind of working on things here, uh, our, the way our generator works for City Hall. Uh, we have to make decisions on what, we can't power everything, so we have to make decisions on what we're gonna power. So I worked with Chavez and we got this room up and going, kept the computers, um, the, um, server up and going. It's kind of a big deal to shut that down. And, uh, kind of plod forward that way. I got in, uh, contact with the mayor, kind of through the process. And after we'd been out for an hour or so and kind of seen some of the damage, um, and I talked to Mr. Pacheco. Uh, kind of felt like we were in for a long haul there. So we kind of set a timeline to, uh, to, uh, cancel the council meeting that night. That of course, uh, I think about fifteen or twenty minutes before, uh, the deadline. We kind of became clearly aware that we were, we were not going to be seeing power anytime soon. So we went ahead and counseled the meeting. Was interacting with the school, with the school district. Uh, they had a lot of questions. Um, I guess, you know, for counseling school, uh, the, the state of California makes that a very, um, hairy process. And, uh, they're in danger of losing funding if they, they can't just do it. Um, so they, they were very thankful that we did declare an emergency. Obviously we're affirming that today. Um, because that's, uh, something for them, um, they probably wouldn't have been able to give an emergency had we not. They probably would have gotten docked had we not referred that, that emergency. Right away we started taking calls from the, from the, the residents. Uh, there were several trees down. For the most part, um, what the city does with downed trees, um, we clear the, the public access ways, so the roads, sidewalks, uh, the alleys, uh, any places that, that we need, um, we need to, the public needs for transport, we make sure those are clear. Like, uh, what's the word I'm searching for here? Contrary to, uh, public perception, uh, the pump trees around the residential areas in the city of Hopeville are not owned by the city. They're owned by the residents. Um, so we get, usually get one of these, in these good storms, one, at least one, one will go down. And we get a call saying, hey, your pump tree landed on something. You have to kind of take care of it. And, uh, you know, always the answer is, no, that's your pump tree. Um, you have to take care of it. Uh, so we did have one pump tree that went down and damaged the house. It was, was in the sidewalk, uh, so we did, did help kind of do the initial, um, cutting of that, that tree just to clear the sidewalk. Um, did a little ancillary help for the driveway while we were out there. Uh, of course, Chief Silva and his crew was out, were out assessing all of the other damage to, to residential areas, uh, the most gifting, which was the, uh, trailer in, in Spanish Trails. There were two trailers affected over there, um, one worse than the other. My knowledge, I think those were, uh, those three structures were the only ones that were significantly damaged. The one with the pump tree in town, which is on Chestnut, and the two, um, uh, trailer, trailers in Spanish Trails. Uh, of course, the, the fallout from there was, really had to do with, uh, with, uh, the loss of power and residents being without power. Uh, we got a lot of calls. We got a lot of, uh, we had some folks stop by here to, to the EOC. Um, I guess, you know, one of the things when, as things progress, uh, we're not always going to open the EOC. We're not always going to, uh, we're not always going to, uh, respond in force to, to events like this. Uh, but as things started to cascade, I kind of felt like we needed, we needed to open the EOC. That again is something that helps us with, you know, reimbursement of, of expenditures, uh, with FEMA. We, we do have to get a declaration from higher up in order for that to be, uh, to take effect, but we'll, we'll be working on that. I think the fact that the county also, um, uh, declared an emergency. And now as Mr. Pacheco said today, the IID declared an emergency, that's helpful. Because, uh, we all know that Hopeville, I guess, maybe don't all know, but Hopeville was the hardest hit, um, municipality in, in this deal. So, uh, I think everybody got some rain, everybody got some wind. I know there was some problems in Colexco. I knew there were some problems on North End. But I don't think it was going to hit as hard as Hopeville. Uh, as far as the city services are concerned, we didn't have too much of a problem, no major interruptions to water or sewer. We did subsequently find out that there was some rain damage to, uh, the electronics or the pumping system from the Wab Water Pond to the water plant. Fortunately, it's still serviceable, but it does need to be repaired, so that's one of the things we're gonna be looking at and, uh, also throw into the mix if there's any reimbursement applied. Um, I guess that's kind of the basics, um, as far as the event was concerned. If anybody has any questions, you know.
How long are you out of power here?
So I think we, like I say, I think we went out about a little after two, between two and two thirty. Um, and I think it was back, I had just left, um, when it came back on, maybe seven thirty or.
Both things were back, or most of the back time went in.
Yeah, they came back and then I was gonna say it went back down again and then, and then about nine, I, I got the message. So, you know, s- over six hours, well, over six hours.
I took a video when it first went out at one forty-four.
Oh, that's a little earlier than I thought.
Didn't come back on our house since like. I never lost that on the. So do you think they make so air? If someone was to cut down a pump tree that's in front of their house, what's the city's position on it?
We would prefer that you didn't because they're historical kind of landmark, but it's your tree.
Okay. Because I, I thought the city was of a position where you're not allowed unless you have authorization. Okay, so if somebody, if somebody wants to, in an effort to avoid something like that, that you cut it down, they're authorized, but for the sake of the city itself, landscape and just as long as you have, we're going to put the pump trees for advocacy. Not to do that.
We would prefer it. I, I think the biggest problem has become, uh, and it's really become really salient in, in the last ten years. I, of course, I don't, you know, that's the time that I've been here, but, um, the biggest problem is people don't water them. And, uh, you, you, you drive around and look and see how many of those parkways are just dirt, dry, dry dirt. And those pump trees are in there. Uh, you know, that's one of the things from the city staff, I mean, we don't have any control over how they're managing those pump trees. So there's no, certainly no, you know, ability for us to dictate, um, and then, and, and be responsible for them when they come down because they're not care, if, if they're not cared for properly, they're gonna come down.
It's not their property.
It's their property.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the, the housing in Oldville was kind of built before people did a lot of underground irrigation. So there, a lot of those parkways, you'll notice that the lawn's green and then the parkway is, is dirt. Because nobody ever got sprinklers run under the, under the, the sidewalk. And so at, at some point, they just quit watering it altogether, you know, maybe they ran a sprinkler or ran, you know, a, a, a pump ground sprinkler or ran the hose in there for a while and then they just give up. And unfortunately then, you know, you got this eighty foot tall palm, palm tree sitting there. So eventually the, the, the weed system's gonna die and then it's all gonna.
You could worry if I'm wrong. I am trying to time it.
What's the word?
When trees are placed in the city, it's usually a community group that steps up and says, we'd like to see the touchstone or trees and such. And I feel about the city and we give it our blessing, but we don't say, and we'll take care of it forever unless it's on the city park, right?
Yeah, that's definitely the case. And, and, you know, one of the things that I would say too is, look at all these trees in the whole park. We haven't had one of the big pump trees. We had one that got sick and we cut it down in the time that I've been here, but none of them come down. Because they're constantly watered, you know, so, um, so they, they thrive. Uh, and, and, you know, they, this one right here was bending, it was, it was laying down almost, you know, but it popped right back up when it was all over and, and, uh, you know, it's been fine, so. So yeah, I, you know, and, and there's a big story, uh, I need to talk to, uh, maybe, maybe a good, it'd be good to have, get, get a presentation one time or something. I know Julie Velasco had done a bunch of research, um, into, you know, those trees came from somewhere on a train back in the nineteen tens or nineteen twenties or something. And, uh, the, the, a whole train load of them came and they planned them all through the city and all that good stuff. Um, so it was, was definitely a coordinated effort, um, at the time. But I, you know, I, I don't know what the, the, I don't, I don't know what the thinking was back then and I don't have any record of that. But I do know our ordinance says flat out, it doesn't mention the pump trees, but it says your, you know, your property is, includes that. The, uh, the parkway, you're, you're expected to keep it up.
Hey.
Certainly. Okay, so that's as far as the event's concerned. So, uh, at, at the point that, uh, we did, did decide that it was important to declare the emergency, uh, I called the mayor, um, and, uh, Chief Silva and the mayor and I all signed the declaration of emergency. Um, and the, kind of the process is, in an emerg, in an emergency such as that, obviously you're not going to call the council to get them to do it, so we do that. And then at the first, the next meeting that we have, we affirm that declaration. So what we're asking today is that you affirm the declaration of an emergency that was signed by the mayor, the fire chief, and myself.
We gave a motion for someone here in the council.
I'll make a motion that that's resolution twenty five twenty five. I'll second, but we do need those corrections made on that declaration.
Okay, for sure.
John Munger.
Yes.
Mike Pacheco.
Yes.
Murray Anderson.
Yes.
Vanessa Ramirez.
Yes.
And Mike Goodson.
Yes. Coming on the I four information, I mean, we don't have any, uh, staff reports. Do you have any, if you'd like to share out any of your information?
Yeah, I was just checking real quick.
Yeah, we can get Ginger to sign it. She's here. That's who you're asking to sign that.
No, I don't, I don't really have any, I don't have anything too, uh, too terribly, um, important to, to, to discuss. Uh, I will say that we finally got through all of the paperwork on trying to get reimbursed for the IID, uh, undergrounding of the canal. Uh, and that, that's also finished, so hopefully we'll get all that money back into the city property sheet pretty quick.
Hey, are we ever gonna hear from Ruben? Ever? Please?
Yeah, I, I'll be talking to Zayn after. I'll tell you tomorrow.
Is he still alive? Is he working on this? Can we get something? Is he working on this? Can we get something? Is that a selfie on?
Are we, I'm sure we are in October doing the lock on the town.
Yes. Uh, and the date's already kind of said. I don't know. Do you know what it is up?
Not off the top of my head right now.
Otherwise we've got other staff reports and anybody have any questions about those. Do you have any further to add? Okay, then I have a question for future meetings. Uh, do you think you can take care of that?
Um, we had that presentation. It says it was this one, but it's going to be the next one for Lindsay Dale for the voters. Yes. So Monday.
Uh, let's try to, when you get it from the event, that's all I'll try to make your commitments for the city of the chairman.
Yeah.
All right. The feast is going to be from.
The fairgrounds. So I'll forward that to you guys and then you can respond.
Don't have a scavenger hunt where you have to, uh, take a selfie.
Who knows? Not at this one.
Nothing else, we will forget you. And we'll see each other at the camp real quick, Mom. Six days.
Six days. Usually I get a little, little reprieve from doing the reports, but I got to get everything done tomorrow.
I know, I didn't even think of that either. I forgot to tell everyone.
I didn't even, I didn't know you guys were still here when I. So you guys are.